So we are right at five o'clock and we do have a quorum with three of us. I'm not sure if Jamie and Jen will be joining us, but we can at least get the meeting started and they can, if somebody keeps an eye on the attendees, invite them in. So, welcome to the November fifteenth Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being held remotely on Zoom. The Select Board members, town staff participants will be invited to speak and are on the main screen here. Anybody that joins as attendees will be in the attendee room. You won't be able to see them on the screen, but they should be able to post questions to us if they want in the question and answer. Please do that or raise your hand and we will, we will read your question that way. We will need your name and your address for our records and any votes taken will be done by roll call vote. So with that, the first item that we have of discussion is the Vote for Contract Amendment Number Two for the Owners Project Manager Services for Public Safety and Public Works Facilities Replacement Project. And that's with PMA Consultants, so welcome back.
Sure, Dottie, thank you. Just to give a brief introduction, the two items first, thank you to the board for being available for a meeting on Wednesday. We're all very excited the project has been approved by voters and as we have talked quite a bit about throughout the outreach sessions and at town meeting, we all take on the town side, but also have a project team side very seriously. Budget control on this project and with any construction time is money. And so PMA and KBA both really wanted to get moving on lining up contracts and getting subcontractors on board and getting people out in the field to keep us on an aggressive schedule for design detail and permitting. And given your, your next business meeting is almost three weeks out, we appreciate you being available to consider these items tonight. So now that the project is approved, we've made it through the feasibility schematic phase. The next stage, we're going into is design development and detailed design. So you have two items in front of you. I'll give a brief overview of both and then I'll turn over to Walter and Chad. But they're amendments to existing contracts that the town has. One for Owners Project Manager Services and the other for Designer Services. As a reminder, just kind of background, following town meetings, initial approval of feasibility and schematic funding in 2021, the town issued RFPs for OPM and Designer Services. The scopes of service in each containing detailed deliverables expected not just through schematic design, but also what scope of service we would expect from these firms, where the project should be approved to move into design development, bidding, construction and closeout. The proposals were solicited by the town, they were reviewed and ranked in open session by design review subcommittees I appointed, who ranked the proposals and recommended the contracts to the board that you executed back nearly two, four years ago in early 2022. So in both instances of the requested amendments, that'll take us through project completion. The form of agreement is acceptable because these are, these are pretty brief. So I'm giving a little more, I think, lead in than typical because these are obviously high value contracts that are on basically one or two page amendments. These are very brief amendments, but they amend our existing contract forms, which are written by town council, both of which are in your packet for your reference, the original lengthier contracts. The accountant has certified that we have appropriation sufficient for the amendments amounts. Those would be the part of the appropriation voted by town meeting on October 23rd for the total $150 million budget. And the amendment budget amounts are consistent with an actually slightly lower than schematic phase estimates for these soft costs of project management and design that were estimated by PMA. So the first one of these is the amendment number two for OPM manage, OPM services for the Public Safety Public Works Facilities Replacement. It's with PMA. The documents are in here, there's a cover letter from, from Walter and Chad. This will amend, this change order is about five point, $5,239,000. It brings the total OPM services from beginning of this, which was early 2022 through project closeout in late 2027 to $5,394,070. And Walter and Chad are here to answer any questions the board has about the scope and what this covers.
Okay, Connor, I just want to interrupt you for one second, just to note for the record at 5:05 that Select Board Member Jamie Stebbins joined us. And that's when I say us, I mean Select Board Member Mark Lamb, myself and Craig Barger, so. Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, thank you. And Walter and I had spoken, I just, I asked Walter, just, I think everyone on the board now has been on the board through a lot of OPM type services with Blanche Ames, but I asked Walter and Chad just to give a, a brief reminder for anyone watching at home. You know, what, what is the role of the OPM? What can we expect over the next few years working together? And, 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 you know, what, what role will the OPM have versus the department heads of the Select Board Municipal Building Committee?
Yeah, absolutely, Connor, happy to, happy to go through that. So thank you for having us and congratulations on the successful vote. So over the next, you know, four to less than five, four to less than five years, you know, PMA will be onboard as we were for Blanche Ames. So over the next about a year, year and a couple of months, we will be heavy in the design phase. So if you remember back to Blanche Ames, that's design development. The milestones are a little bit different here, being that this is not an MSBA project. So we have a 75 slash 80% design package following that design development phase. So design development will take the drawings to a point where they can be estimated. That'll be early, late winter, so late January will be the time period for that, early February, where that submission would take, or that package would be completed with estimators estimated and then reviewed to make sure that it was in the, it's within the budget. Value management's needed at that time. We will run through those exercises again with the Municipal Building Committee and they will vote to make recommendations in or out of scope, very similar to Blanche Ames. You know, as these design development stages are being pushed through, KBA will be working through the permitting process for the project as well. We are working out the submission schedule with that through KBA, getting a detailed work plan through the design development phase. And then at each phase supplemental to those, so 75%, 80% and then through 100%, we'll also have a very detailed work plan from KBA for what's going on there. So KBA and PMA will work in coordination with the town, with the Municipal Building Committee, with our focus groups to make sure that the needs of the three buildings are incorporated within the drawings, making sure that the design is heading in the right direction. PMA will perform drawing reviews and, and get those back to KBA for corrections and edits and incorporation into the drawing. So that's really the design phase. That would take us into the bidding phase where PMA is going to perform the reference chat, draft the RFP RFQs for the trade contractors. Make, you know, that task is about, I'd say, 100 plus submissions, inclusive of reference checks for those 100 plus submissions for Fire Substation Police DPW project. Will be working through approvals of the trade contractors at that point, getting that ready for the general contractors. We'll do the same process for general contractors, very similar to Blanche Ames, that 149 process. That is late fall of 2024. So as we move through there and then looking to break ground about a year and a few months from now. So once the general contractor is onboard, you know, pending a successful bid, we will then be the boots on the ground for the Town of Easton. Daily oversight, quality control management, working with the designer, making sure deliverables are met, making sure scheduled dates are hit, managing the budget, managing the invoice, invoice process, very similar to the tasks that were done for Blanche Ames, working that process right through the substantial completion date, closeout, turnover, making sure that all the trainings are occurring. So making sure that the Town of Easton has gotten what they've paid for through the project, through the general contractor, through the subcontractors and then through the closeout period. So that's a very high level overview of OPM tasks through that process and kind of highlighting the schedule of that period as well.
Okay, and I think the packet has a really good document of the scope of services that is pretty easy to understand and people can take a look at that to dig into some of the particulars on it. Any questions from anyone on the board so far?
Not at the moment.
Just one, one quick comment that a number of people before the vote, both the town meeting and, and on Saturday were asking about who was going to be monitoring the performance of the contractors. And I told them that we were very pleased that PMA was still onboard and that they were the ones who helped us bring Blanche Ames to fruition and under budget. So they were very pleased with that and I think that helped a little bit. So thank you to that Walter and Chad.
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, I, I would echo that and say that, you know, with any relationship, having, you know, some familiarity is really important. So to have worked so closely together with this team over the last several years, I think that that is going to make it a very smooth transition for us because we already know the expectations of each other and we know how, how we work, how we work together. The level of expertise and quality that we're looking for, we have the, the threshold and the bar set very high on that. And I think that, that I'm really looking forward to working with you on this. The trust is already there and, you know, it takes a while to establish that with any kind of a, a new relationship on a big project like this. So I think that we can really hit the ground running and it sounds like you're very ambitious. Even having this meeting tonight shows that we're all ambitious and excited to get this going.
Can I just ask Connor one question? You mentioned the finances. Can you just describe that please about where we are with the, the payment process for these?
Sure, I actually, thank you Craig, and I, I asked Walter to run back through the schematic level cost estimation process and Walter, I'm going to try and pull that up if I get.
I, I can, I can speak right to it Connor if you want. So these, these numbers are right in line with what the Municipal Building Committee recommended and improved at the schematic design level. At the feasibility study report, the way that the cost estimation and I would say forecasted budget is done is that you carry a roughly a 30% soft cost fee. So high level, we are at about 28.9% soft costs with, with the, with these two contracts. So the OPM and the designer contract, that also includes contingency. So we are about 1.1% lower than what we had anticipated at the feasibility study report. As that breaks down, so that includes OPM, designer and contingency. And then specifically that is the contingency, I know Connor had asked, the contingency carried is about 25% of that soft cost value. What that means is it's about six and a half percent. Let me make sure I get that right, one second. Believe it is eight and a half percent of the construction cost.
Right, so the construction cost estimate is currently 116 million, 740,587 and the construction contingency carried is 8,700, on top of this is 8,755,544. So we're, we're a hair, like Walter said, about a percent under what the estimated soft cost would be at schematic level.
So the, the, we, we're not using, we're not doing bonding yet for, for this?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So you're asking about the cash flow and issuance of debt. So the awarding of this contract now doesn't have any impact on our expected cash flow for the project. So if this, this mirrors what we baked into the three-year increment plan. So that envisions issuance in the spring of next year, which the principal and interest of which would start being payable the following summer, which would be fiscal '25.
Thank you.
And I expect this as part of the design detail phase, we will start, once we get estimates at the 75 to 80% level, not to put Walter and Chad on the spot, but I would assume that at that point, once we get those refined numbers, understand more about whether we're doing one bid or two, then we'll start building more specific cash flow models with calendars and re-engaging with Southwest and other financial advisors, looking at where the market's at and things like that to get a more informed multi-year bond schedule for the board.
Absolutely, hit the nail on the head.
And we'll be updating the, the PSW, Easton PSW website with all this information.
That's right. Currently.
Yep, so we, we are going to keep that website. That's a good question, Dottie. So Easton PSW is here to stay for another four years or, or so. So we will continue to host all documents related to this project at that page. PMA will continue to have that project Facebook page that'll have updates of like Municipal Building Committee presentations and all that. So we will continue our practice of, of just everything about this project will be publicly available for anyone.
I think that's important, you know, with any project that we do, there's always people who say, I never heard of that. I had no idea you were talking about building a new school or, and, you know, we try really hard to make sure that we're using every possible method of letting people know what we're doing because we're excited about it. These are great projects and they're fascinating to be a part of or to watch the meetings. Having sat on the school planning committee for all those years and, and others on, other Select Board members have as well. It, it's, it really, it's really, really interesting and there's a lot of great information. Things that you're thinking about at home, you know, have they thought of this? Have they thought of that? You'll see that based, there, there's really, there was nothing I could think of on the school planning perspective that, that we hadn't thought of and a lot of things that I never dreamed of. So I, I hope people will hear about this and think about it and watch these meetings and send us your questions. Participate when, when we're looking for that kind of participation. It's, you know, it, it's very rewarding.
Yeah, thank you, Dottie. And I think it's worth noting, so this project, it's not, it will probably not be on every single Select Board agenda moving forward like it has been the past year, but it will be the, I don't want to say sole focus, but the major focus of the Municipal Building Committee for their meetings every month for three plus years. And when we get into major milestones, it'll be multiple times per month. So the Municipal Building Committee usually meets on Tuesdays and, and those are, those are public meetings and those are really focused workshop level meetings, but we're going to go through budgets line by line and designs and all that's public and people are welcome to, to join and, and watch and follow along with this project as it, as it develops.
Are those on Zoom or in person?
Both. So when, when we are available and we, we have the staff available, we, I think Andy Williams, the chair, has been trying to have the meetings in the Corona Room, either in person or hybrid and occasionally they're on Zoom.
Okay, great.
And they're on the website as well, the dates for the meeting for, through design development phase.
Okay, great. And, you know, people that really want to be notified, you can go onto the town website down in the bottom left and you go onto Documents on Demand and at the top of that next screen, you'll see a place where you can request notification for certain meetings and then just check off the boxes for the committees where you want to receive notifications for any time an agenda is posted or meeting minutes are posted and you can select more than one and you can go back in and edit it and delete some if you want. But it's very handy. I, I've got alerts on a few of them and just, you know, even if I don't attend the meeting, just to kind of see what's on the agenda to take a look at the minutes, so. All right, are you looking for a vote on Amendment Number Two? Are we at that yet? If there's no more questions?
If the board is willing, yes.
All right, Craig, do you have that access to that in your packet? The language for the amendment?
I don't have the specific amendment. Is there a specific amendment that was in the package?
Yes, so it's Amendment, excuse me, Amendment Number Two for Owners Project Management Services for the Public Safety Public Works Facilities Replacement Project with PMA Consultants.
I don't think I see that. I didn't.
I don't know, it wasn't written out specifically like that. What I'm looking at is under the Payment Schedule Amendment Number Two. In a different color.
Yep, sorry, excuse me, it's bookmarked in the, the document that was shared as PMA Executed Amendment Number O2. So, but the actual, if you printed it Craig, it would, the, at the header, it says Amendment Number Two, November 7, 2023, Attachment A Payment Schedule.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing that unfortunately, I apologize.
You want me just to, I, I can read Amendment Number Two?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Mark?
All right, Amendment Number Two, in consideration of Owners Project Manager's delivery of basic services, the contract is hereby amended to capture efforts associated with design development, construction documents, bidding, construction administration, closeout. Basic services for these phases will be performed on a fixed basis in accordance with the below fee for basic services schedule, up to a total basic services fee that shall not exceed $4,514,000, an allowance of $725,000 for estimating, printing, third-party testing, moving and other extra services and reimbursable expenses as requested by the Town of Easton is also included. I make a motion to approve that.
So a motion to, to accept Amendment Number Two? And Craig, did you want a second?
Second that.
So that's Lamb and Barger and it will have to be a roll call vote, starting with you Craig?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Terrific. So the next item on the agenda is discussion and vote of, wait a second, where am I here? That was Amendment Number Two. So this is discussion and vote for the Contract Amendment Number Two for Designer Services for Public Safety.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So attached in your packet and I apologize for all the three-letter acronyms of OPM and KBA and PMA, but this is PMA, there's a cover letter from PMA recommending KBA, so Castle Booze Proposal to amend their 2022 Design Services Contract that was solicited under the process described earlier, which will take us through design development, construction administration, permitting and closeout. I think on a contractual schedule through fall of 2027. The amendment total is $12,279,000, includes all anticipated services as I just touched on. So Walter, I know there's more to add from PMA's perspective. I know we have Greg joint here, Greg is, Todd is here. I don't know, would you like to move Todd Costa into the panel as well?
Sure, you can move him in, but if there are any questions, we're happy to take them or.
I guess I would just ask Walter, could you just give an overview, just like you did with the, you know, the OPM role? What, you know, why is this contract $12 million?
Yep, absolutely, so. Yep, so this, this takes you, this takes you all the way through closeout. So this is KBA's fee to take, take you through closeout. That, this also gets all of their subcontractors on boards. They're going to have somewhere between 10 and 18 different subcontractors for engineers that are going to be assisting them in developing these documents. During the design development phase, we're going to be meeting with the MBC, we're going to be meeting with those focus groups. But kind of sup, in addition to that, these subs and, and the reason that we wanted to get in front of this group kind of so quickly is to get some of these subcontractors out in the field to perform investigation for both the geothermal portion of the project, to perform investigation for soil analysis for the project. You know, the basics were initially completed, but now that we're ready to move into full design, these guys need to get out in the field and they want to get in before the frost. So this allows those processes and subcontractors to get out in the field before, hopefully before the frost. Otherwise it'll be tough digging and, and a little bit slower moving. But this gets these contracts in order, but it allows KBA to begin that develop, process of developing these drawings as well. It also allows them to get their supplemental and, and what we'll call allowances, but additional services. So anything really not basic to every single project, if, if you look in that, is considered an additional service. So bridge design, wetland permitting, we know we have both of those things on the project. And while we know we have them, we, we, they're not considered basic services. So basic would just be bringing the building out of the ground, what you need in that place, in that. But these fall right in line with what was reviewed with the Municipal Building Committee. PMA and KBA had met previously as the SD phase was winding down to review these costs, develop these costs and making sure that they were in alignment with the anticipated project budget. And this goes back to that 1.1% that we had mentioned that we were under when compared to the feasibility study report. So happy to take.
So the basics, the basic services of the 11.3 million, that, that has already been accounted for. So what we're voting on for Amendment Number Two?
No, it's, it's everything, Dottie, sorry.
Oh, it's everything, okay.
Same as PMA, it's the basic services and the additional service.
Okay.
So I, I apologize, it, it is very, I wanted, that's why I was speaking to that, I wanted to make sure it was clear. So those are, those are the additional services that are required to bring the project to completion. But we, we kind of consider them allowances.
Okay, so for the basic services, the design development, the construction documents, the pre-qualifications of the subs, trades and general contractors and the bidding, the construction administration and the closeout, and that comes to 11.329 million. And then the allowance for the recommended additional services is the traffic engineering, geotechnical, geo-environmental design and wetland permitting and bridge design. That's an additional 950 and it comes, so the total amendment is $12,279,000.
You got it.
Any other, any?
I'm sorry, guys.
Could you just, you know, or, or Greg either? So we've talked about this a lot, but I feel like particularly when we're talking about contracts of this size, it's important to reiterate and, and have the discussion. You know, you said KBA is considering up to 18 different subcontractors, even just their feasibility and schematic. We, this was a very large multidisciplinary and multi-firm design team because of the scale and scope of this project and all the different departments and systems. Greg or Walter, can you just walk through, you know, if, if someone from the public is only tuning into this meeting and this is the only meeting about this project, why is the design contract scope so large? Why, why, why such a big team with this project?
Sure, Connor, and I, I will just kind of break down. So basic services, as Walter described, are really like designing the site and the building. But we have some complex sites here and we have a, a kind of complex configuration of buildings. We have two sites with four different buildings, three big buildings and a storage building. Additionally, we have a fuel island, so a, a gas station for the town's fleet, a salt storage shed, which we don't really consider a, a building, but it is a, a large structure within the site that also needs to be designed and procured, which is part of the total project budget. We do have in both locations, the anticipation of the need for traffic engineering and design. So those preemption lights that we talked about are earlier on at previous meetings at both locations to preempt traffic from crossing when emergency vehicles are responding out is included. The geotechnical engineer to evaluate the soils is included here for design services and the additional services. The geo-environmental engineer, so on the Depot Street site, we have a lot of refuse on the site. So we've carried a geo-environmental engineer to ensure that we can properly clean those areas, making sure that all of that debris is properly removed, soils reevaluated and make sure that that site is clean and safe for not only the departments, but environmentally friendly for the surrounding wetlands. The wetlands permitting, we've talked about pretty extensively. You know, not only do we have a, a complex site, we have a complex regulatory environment that requires us to make sure we're beating all of the standards that are appropriate and make sure we're treating the surrounding area with the most care we can. To do that, we're required to put in two bridges. That bridge design is, is not something typical within a, a project of this type normally. And, and similar to some of those other things. So the contract lays out what, what we, you know, have as basic services, which is really designing the building, getting it out of the ground and getting the surrounding site designed. And then it lays out other things that are considered additional services. And what the proposal does is break those out, the way the contract delegates them so that you have the ability to go back and compare the fee with other fees. You have the ability to go back and compare it with like MSBA projects, for example, so that you can judge based on the fee and the scope of work, whether it's a fair fee or not. When you, when you kind of cobble them all together, things may seem higher. When you, when you kind of cobble them all together, things may seem higher or lower, but when you really break them down, the intent is to allow the public and the board to understand the fee clearly, so that they can make a sound judgment.
So I think it's worth noting, in a project like this, as we learned from Blanche Ames, it's a long process, and there's a lot of things that are going to be changing and moving and adjusting as you get started. There's going to be things that come up that may not have been anticipated, or things that are different than anticipated. So this memo also notes that what is not included is supplemental services such as land survey, radio system valuation or design, alerting systems, IT systems beyond infrastructure, furniture fixtures and equipment procurement, municipal fiber design, or any other scope beyond the project limit of the work areas, et cetera. So, so if things come up as we go along, that, that we need some more of those, those services will be procured. But I just want people at home that are watching this, if you're following it from day one, to be like, well, wait a minute, why didn't they think of this? They did think of this, it's just not part of this contract at this time.
Right, that's a good point, Dottie. And, and another aspect is some of it's also been done as well, as part of feasibility schematic, right? We did survey already, there's radio system evaluation ongoing with SEMRAC. You know, and Walter, Greg, correct me, but the IT systems, that's, that's specifically stuff beyond the F F and E, right? Everyone's favorite acronym, like, so that's, that is a substantial, F F and E is contemplated as part of these. Or would be part of a construction pricing that we baked in and anticipate. It's not like these are going to be shells that don't have.
No, we're carrying, we're carrying, carrying very detailed estimates within the project budget for the fixtures, the equipment, and the IT in the project budget. Those are carried in that project budget, yep.
Right. And then as far as another aspect that's unique, I think probably this is running the sewer connection, is that?
Carried within, yep.
But that's important for Depot Street, right? That's one of the main drivers why we picked five twenty-four Depot, is it has reasonable access, although you do need to put some pipe in the ground, has reasonable access to the sewer, which very few sites in town do. So, so there's, there are a lot of unique parts of this project. But to your point, Dottie, the packet does have a much more kind of detailed itemized scope on a per subcategory basis, that's, and it's not online now, it will be, all, with all the board's meeting materials are online, so anyone following along can find those on the Documents on Demand and look through the scope themselves if they're curious.
Okay, any questions from the board? Nothing? All right. If somebody would like to make a motion to accept amendment number two for designer services and pub, and public safety, the amendment total of that is twelve million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Go ahead, Mark.
So moved, Lamb.
Second, Barger.
So that's Lamb and Barger, with a roll call vote, starting with you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. I think that's it. Any other comments or questions?
No, this is very exciting that we're starting off this quickly, so. We have great faith in the PMA and, and Castle Booze as well, so.
If you could ahead of year, it'd be great.
We already met with the municipal, municipal building committee, so they were excited to get going as well.
Great.
I was just going to say, I appreciate everybody being available on a Wednesday to, to kick this off and get this moving. But these, some of these big decisions that come, you know, really set things in motion, so it's not our regular day that we meet. And I know that people are busy, and it, it means a lot that people are willing to, to do this and show up for this meeting tonight.
For sure. Yeah, I mean, three weeks makes a big difference.
Absolutely.
So, it's a lot of important stuff moving, and I think Walter, what do you, you think, I mean, the, the, the design development will have some milestones in January. I'll of course keep the board periodically updated, but we'll start seeing, when do you expect like a, like a milestone update from a board, probably February-ish? Is that fair?
I would say, yeah, once that design development, once that whole estimate, estimation period, estimate, estimate and value management period wraps up, it would be, probably be a great time to meet with the, do an update with the select board, so maybe sometime in February.
And then again, for, for anyone at home, that there will be many meetings between now and then, every month, the municipal building committee will meet. If people want to follow along with the kind of working group meetings, and we'll keep everything on eastonpsw.com as we go.
And Jamie is the select board representative on the municipal building, so he can keep us updated as well if we have any questions, or if there's anything super exciting that comes up that you want to share with us, Jamie.
Absolutely, yeah, and thank you to Greg and Walter.
You very much. Thank you for, for meeting. This is very helpful to get us going and get under contract with our consultants. Thank you.
Terrific. All right, with that, if there's no other comments or questions, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor with a roll call vote, starting with you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Sevens, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, guys.